These are numbered.
Okay, welcome to the March 3rd City of Angels City Council Meeting. Please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Councilman Herman.
Present.
Councilwoman Faldor.
You have councilwoman, women, I guess.
Vice Mayor Borleo.
Here.
Mayor Olivera.
Present.
And Councilwoman Matilde is absent.
Okay. Discussion of the agenda, any public comment on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council, we have some adjustments to make, I think.
I would like to remove item B. Our candidate will not be able to attend this evening.
Oh, okay.
Any other adjustments? Okay, look for a motion to approve the agenda then as adjusted.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted.
Second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four oh, one absent. Public comment? This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. State law prohibits the city council from acting upon matters not listed on the agenda. Any comment from the public tonight? Okay, seeing none?
Hold on. I was waiting for somebody else to go first.
Oh. Well, you have to sit back down then because nobody will go first.
That's okay. Good evening, Mary Beth Hospitall. I'm wearing a different hat tonight. I am here as a director of the Calaveras County Fairgrounds. And I wanted to just make an announcement that we, you may have seen or heard already, we finally have our headliner for the fair, it's Matt Stell. We are so excited. It was the help of Jeremy Leonard and a couple other people, and we are super excited to have him. So, watch for info.com, I think there is some info on our website already, you can buy tickets, it'll be Friday night. I know when you say the name Matt Stell, people don't know who that is, but if you look up the song, I think it's Prayer, I don't even know, but when you listen to the song, you're gonna know who he is, so. Everybody come join us, Friday night at the fair, we are so excited, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment? Anybody want to go second?
Yeah.
All right. Moving along then, we're gonna report out on the closed session we had tonight regarding real property negotiations. On a vote of 3-1-1, the council voted to provide, ask, give direction to the administrator to proceed with the transactions as negotiated in items A through K that you see on the agenda tonight. That closes that out. We got that covered? Okay. So, next item is consent agenda, any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council, anybody want to move anything?
I'll move, oh wait.
Okay, as is.
Move or approve all?
Get a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Four oh to approve the consent agenda as is. Moving to the regular agenda, we have presentation. Coffin Associates with requests for direction on the selection of comparable agencies for the City of Angels Classification Compensation Study.
Very good, I would like to introduce Monica Garrison, and she is with Coffin Associates, and she will be discussing the staff report and also reviewing with the council the comparator agencies so that we can continue to move forward with our classification and compensation study. So Monica.
And so I assume each of you received the memo that was prepared as of last week outlining the proposed labor market agencies and benchmark classifications for the compensation study. We're coming before you, just, we've done the background research and kind of as the memo lays out, giving you some background as to why we've selected these agencies and why we think they'd be a good match for the city's market. And so we're coming forward here to see if you have any thoughts on it, and kind of walk you through our process, I guess, with that. As it's outlined in the memorandum, where, when we look at, when we're looking at labor market for any agency, we're really looking to identify the best possible mark agencies to provide the most number of comparable matches across all the jobs surveyed within the city. With a city such as yours, which has both water, wastewater, as well as fire, and then all the normal city services, we have to kind of look a little bit broader than just the standard city structure, because not everyone provides all of those services. And in doing so, we also have to realize that up in this area, you're kind of in a very isolated market. You don't have, there's not a ton of, you know, we always joke, in California, you can throw a rock and hit 10 public agencies, and in a lot of parts of California, you can, up here, not so much. So we are limited, we also paid a lot of attention to the geographic structure, simply because it does have a lot of impact on both, you know, most people who live up here aren't going to be going for these types of jobs, moving out of the area. So it's kind of, you know, looking at that's where we feel your biggest market impact will be. So we did try and stay with the regional market. That said, we did have to push out into some, a little bit further, simply because we were contracted to survey 11 agencies, which we think is a good number, we wouldn't want to do less, because what we really need to do is, we need to make sure, ideally for each of the surveyed classifications, that we come up with four benchmarks. That's our minimum, in order for us to feel comfortable making a recommendation on salary based on market data. So with less than four comparables, we say we have insufficient data, and we set, we make recommendations based upon internal equity, which is totally doable, but obviously the more market data we can get, the better sound, I guess you would say, the compensation structure is to the market. So with that said, we did look to some cities that were a little bit further afield, two of which that come to mind are Placerville and Oakdale. Simply, both of which offer all the same services you folks have, so I anticipate, and I've looked through their classification structures, and I anticipate getting good, you know, being able to identify comparables to bodies of work across the structure, but they are, they are the ones that I would say the most far afield to the local, to the local market. You'll notice on page two of the memo, as we go through, it's, we've recommended Calaveras County. We're generally, we'll recommend the county that the agency resides in. Historically, as it's mentioned later in the memo, you folks have surveyed Tooleme County. The reason we did not choose two counties is that the structures are very different for management, it's, with a smaller city, it's very, it's sometimes difficult to find comparable leveling, to make appropriate matches, and they also have, you know, just different structure of services. So again, really looking at where we felt we could get the best matches. New to the survey this time than in past, we had, it was requested, and we agree, that several standalone fire departments that are local are also on the survey. It's a trick with that one, because we give up the opportunity to get matches across other things in order to make sure we have fire, but it does make sure that we have a strong fire, that we have a strong fire comparable. So, like, it's always, it's always a weighing, like, you know, give one, take another. And with that, I think most everything else has, have been on, as my understanding, have been in your market previously. That's just kind of how we went about looking at identifying where we, you know, if we only have 11, which 11 are we gonna put forward? So, questions?
No, I think it's a good slice.
Yeah, I want to just be certain I understand the structure of this thing. You mentioned four comparables. Is that to say that from among these 11, say, water, we want at least four comparisons?
That is correct.
So, these 11 provide?
Yes.
All of those categories?
Yes, and we should have more than four everywhere, but then we have difference in organization structure and all the other things that play into it, so that I might lose one or two. But in theory, like, it's, we're trying to have at least four across every benchmark.
Function.
Yeah, every classification surveyed. So if you, and if you go to page three of the memo, it lists the 25 classifications that we'll be surveying.
So, on that page, you've got captain listed.
That's your fire.
That's fire, okay, I just want to be sure that.
Yes.
The other places that spoke to fire, and with the exception of sergeant.
Sergeant is, yeah, sergeant's police, so.
PD, and captain is fire. Okay.
Great, and so, yeah, and with that, and we're looking to survey pretty much straight benchmarks, as I mentioned, for, if you'll notice, we have, like, the equipment operator too, the maintenance worker too, the plant operator too, those are the journey level positions, they're doing the full body of work. We are not, we are not surveying the entry level positions, because once we have solid journey level data, then we would, with internal equity, make a recommendation as to how, as to how to pay the lower levels. And that's kind of industry standard, how it works, because we will get the most data for the journey level.
And how do you address things that are in the framework of various entities that has to do with percentages for educational levels, percentages for longevity, things like that? Is that accounted for in the study?
There's, it's interesting, but we, this is a total compensation study, so we will be collecting benefits as well. Longevity, one of the elements that you spoke to, is often a, it can be a total compensation benefit. It's not very common that we collect that anymore, and I've been doing this for 15 years. When I started, we collected it all the time, when, now, we hardly ever, we hardly ever pick it up, because it's a, it's a program that's been taken out over time. Generally, most agencies have a step plan that goes, like, one through five steps, that you achieve, you can reach the top step in, at the course of five years in class, and we are picking up the salary for the highest, comparing the highest paid across all of the classifications, and structuring it that way, so we're kind of taking into consideration what's naturally built in. Additional longevity programs where they pay, you know, say, 2% for, at 10 years, and another five, and 5% at 15, we don't see that very often. That said, if it's, if you feel it's common in this market, it might be something that you would want us to consider. We are currently working with your city administrator to outline what benefits she feels would be most useful to her, because we have our set benefits that we collect for everybody, which is health, retirement, leave practices, that allows us to evaluate across the agencies, but then there's additional things such as retiree health or longevity. And we pick up, and we will, and we have a set few, set, I think it's like four different options, among many, that you can choose, that we'll pick up additional information on, as we're surveying.
So would your study then recommend one way or another whether longevity should be excluded from a compensation package for the entity?
Yeah, what we end up doing is, we end up reporting what the market practices. So we'll, so you'll say in your, so you can compare yourself to everybody else. Our recommendations are generally based on either a roll-up of total compensation or base salary, sometimes it's based upon your historic, what you've done historically, or it's just makes, it's to what, as to which way we feel is more representative, depending upon the data. Until I see the data, I don't know what I would recommend on that, but we will make a recommendation, and why, as to what, as to which way to apply the data. And then what it really comes down to is, all of those other components, like retiree health, the different things, we let you know what the, what the labor market's doing, so you can evaluate, is your practice rich in the market or poor in the market? Is it something when you're going to negotiations that you might want to look at again, or is it something that, you know, that you're, you know, feel like you're just right on, on par with everyone else? Do you see what I mean? That's really what those additional information pieces do. We, yeah, and we can give you a summary as to what the market trends are, but that's really, like I said, in, overall, in the state of California, longevity is really not a, not a commonplace or popular, I would say, benefit any longer. That doesn't mean that in certain areas, it's not, like, I did a study in South Lake Tahoe, and I can tell you they're doing some interesting benefits up there, that I'm not seeing other places. So it's not, not to say that in this market, it wouldn't be.
Are the, will these results be blind for us, or will we know the, when you present the data, are we gonna see the cities?
You'll see the cities.
Specific entities' responses?
Yep, you'll see, and we actually collect all the data and evaluate it ourselves. We don't ask them to make the, make those determinations, we pull in all the data, evaluate it, and make determinations on our own, so that the degree of accuracy in evaluation is much more consistent, as you can imagine, than if we asked them to tell us what, who does this, types of things. And that said also, you know, we'll pull, we pull it all in and present it on a class by class basis, as to what all the matches are. So, and then it generally is put up into summary documents to work with going forward, recommendations.
So are all these people participating, are they recipients of the report as well?
What we just spoke about earlier, they don't, generally speaking, they don't get the full report, because you guys paid a lot of money for that, and so, you know, there's some value to that for you. What they do do at the end is, we do have a mechanism in which we give them the result summaries, so, for example, like, for the accountant classification, it would, it will say across the whole market, and then it pushes your data back in, because all of the, all of our analysis will have your data, and will evaluate the market to your data, so it's you relative to the market. That analysis puts your data back in with everybody else in the pool, and then gives a median and, you know, mid-range and average of the market. And that's generally what we provide people at the end, is that, you know, we don't give them individual matches, we don't show the detail, or, you know, all the depth of work that goes into it, but the results is something that's provided.
Okay. Public comment? Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. What do we need here? Is this just information, or do you need direction?
Direction to move forward with the comparator agencies.
So we need a, we need a motion to move forward with the cities selected?
Correct, the recommended list of comp agencies, the 11 identified.
Got it, okay.
I make a motion to move forward with the 11 recommended agencies in the class of comp study?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four oh, and one absent. Okay. B has been removed, C, presentation by Destination Angels Camp and Cal Waste on the replacement of the trash receptacles in the City of Angels.
Good evening, thank you for having us. Never thought that in my career at Destination Angels Camp, I'd be talking about trash and trash cans, but here we are, as part of our community outreach. Trash receptacles that have been throughout town were the green-covered trash receptacles, and had trash, had recycling. It was a project through the city and Angels Camp Business Association about 17 years ago. They replaced throughout town, 13 of them, to be exact. They're old, they're old now, they're very outdated, they're kind of like sticky yicky as you try to push that door in to put your trash in. The logos are faded out, some of the trash cans were dented in, so it was time for a change. And we know how community loves change. They love those old trash cans. So we spent the last nine months talking to businesses throughout town about the trash cans. And our partner is Cal Waste, Mary Beth and I talked a few times about how to approach this, because we know people don't like change. And so we had several meetings throughout town. And Mary Beth and I, and her crew from Cal Waste was present, Monday came to a few of these, we extended invites to some of the downtown businesses, and others who were just interested in general, heard the pros and cons of it all, and determined that, for the most part, people were ready for a change. They were okay with this. There was a few that, oh gosh, they loved those trash cans.
The frogs.
Part of what, or the frogs on the cans. Part of what was driving it is technology has changed, and that's where Mary Beth is going to address the technology. One of the things that we're most grateful for in Angels is that Cal Waste has been providing this service at no charge to the community or to the city for at least 17 years. And as I learned on Monday, it's probably been more like 20, 25 years, where they've picked up this trash faithfully, weekly, for all that time, at no charge. And it was never something that had to be negotiated, it was just their way of, you know, participating in our city and doing something nice. So, Mary Beth is going to address the technology. It was her spirit and enthusiasm that applied for a grant, which was received, and she'll talk a little bit about that. And then I'll talk about our change out on Monday, and how well that went. So, Mary Beth?
Okay, I get to be second this time. Mary Beth Hospitall, Director of Brand and Outreach for Cal Waste. I super want to thank Debbie and Melissa for really spearheading this, without Debbie, these gals really made it happen. Change is hard, nobody likes change, everybody, they loved those cans, it was like, how can we pry off the decal and like, put it on the new can? I mean, we were gonna save those cans, life or death. I mean, I finally had to say, okay, wait a second. There was a reason why we're getting rid of these, I'll get to that in a second, but people were loving those things, like, can I take them home? Oh man, it was this whole big thing. And we experienced this in Murphy's, we got rid of these in Murphy's.
Two years ago?
Two years ago, I think it's been two years now. We did the same thing, however, there was no grant available at the time, so the Murphy's Business Association ponyed up half, and Cal Waste did the other half. And it's, again, it's the same reasoning that I'll talk about now with technology. Cal Waste, since coming to the county, all of our trucks are automated now. We do, we do not run anything that's not automated, except in the highway for a corridor, because we have the bear issue. Therefore, we can't, people can't leave carts out, they have bear boxes, et cetera. But everything else down, Murphy's down, is all automated. So when we're servicing these city cans in the street, it was a different truck, it was more man hours, and it really was not efficient. And the other thing that came into play was legislature, that happened about a year ago, maybe 1383, and it's, it's still in play right now, they're trying to really put the teeth behind it, and really essentially, all Cal Recycle is saying is this, no matter where you go in the state of California, that those recycling receptacles will all match in color, and they will all match in whatever, I don't know, if you wanted to put something on there that says what's acceptable or not, they have to all be matching. And so, with this, those cans were not matching that, so we needed to go blue, blue is the universal color for recycling. So that was another reason behind it, was that's coming down the pipeline, so let's address it now. And two, our trucks cannot service those. With these new cans, our trucks can drive up with the automated truck, put the, same thing as a residential, fork the can, and tip it and go. So there is really no reason to not move in this direction. I think, again, it's a good thing overall, I think after some time, like Debbie had mentioned, the doors would barely open on those metal things. I do want to tell you that we recycled all of the metal, we did not throw it away, so if anybody was just dying to get their hands on one, they have been recycled, we did not trash them. So, there are 13 receptacles, 13 trash, and 13 blue. They're placed strategically around the county, I'd be happy to share the map that Debbie provided. The trash and the recycling receptacle are right by each other, so you don't have to walk too far if you have recycling and trash at the same time. The grant that was obtained was through the county, so about a year ago, when we started talking about this, you know, Angels Camp didn't have the money to come up with this, this, the 26 receptacles was about, over $10,000. So Cal Waste said, we'll pay half if you guys can come up with the other half. So, in the meantime, Cal Recycle put a grant out, I told the recy, or I think Melissa, I don't know, you were involved somehow, but the recycle coordinator came to us and said, there's some money, where can we use it? And I said, City of Angels needs these receptacles, and they don't have the money to pay for them, can we use that money? So that took a long time, finally they got their money, we paid, paid the vendor, and the carts were here, and they were the wrong color. So, it was off by just a small shade of blue, but it was the wrong blue. So that, that set us back a little bit, but unfortunately, we rectified that, and we've had them sitting, and so, I'm just so happy to drive into town tonight and see them, and I really hope that they are welcomed by this community, and I hope that you see the value in them, and honestly, I really think they're a good thing. I think that they, they hold more, they're easy to put the stuff in, there's nothing falling out, so, I think it's a good thing. So, I think I've addressed everything. If you guys have any questions, I know Debbie was maybe looking to get one more set by the DAC office, is that correct? So we'll talk about that, we also kind of provide a cleaning program to make sure, we partner with, with the city to make sure those things stay clean, they have our name on them, and they also have the city's, I guess, logo. If you haven't seen them, go check them out! I know it's gonna be the first thing you do when you get out of here. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Beth.
Thank you.
We all took this project on, because working with Mary Beth is so fun. So with that, on Monday, we changed them out, and I'd like to highlight the work of Public Works. Most of these trash cans were bolted to the ground, so they went through and unbolted them in preparation of this day. Second, we had the Cal Waste crew who came out to check out preliminary, what we needed to do. They were wonderful on Monday, there were two of them, they were just delightful, it was fun to do some photo shopping and, and talk about everything that they do, and the hard work they put into just working for Cal Waste and the program. But with every project, there's always something else that comes out, and so what we learned is, the gentleman who picks up the garbage has been doing it for many, many years, he inherited this job, you might say, and so when we're all said and done, I'm just tickled that we have 13 trash cans, and we relocated a few to just make it more conducive to people's walking paths and being able to dump garbage, and he says, what about those four stone trash receptacles you have? And I went, four stone receptacle trash cans? And he said, yes, the two at the visitor's center, and the two at the shopping center. And I went, I had no idea those were part of the program and something you've been picking up for years. So they've been picking up these four stone receptacles for many, many years, and so I said, well, we need to take them away. And so we worked on the two that were in town, we ended up putting one in front of our DAC office, because there's a lot of trash in that location. And we also put one at the Alta Ville Grammar School, because there was really nothing there. The other two are at the visitor's center, and so we're working with Martin, and working with Cal Waste, to see if we can get the correct trash receptacles and then take care of that. But they're all manually picked up, so that's where the driver may have this electronic arm and does his thing, but on these four receptacles, they have to physically get out, take apart the trash can and dump them. So we want to make sure the entire program is conducive to the new ways that Cal Waste does business, and so we'll achieve that over here in the next week or so. I don't think it'll take a year like it did, but we're working in that direction. So we notified all the businesses what we were up to, we told them Monday was the day, I invited them all here tonight, if they wanted to make any kind of public comments, or give any kind of recommendations, or have any concerns, and I don't see many here tonight, so I think we're okay. So, thank you again to Cal Waste, and working with Mary Beth and her crew, and I'm just delighted that we did receive the grant and were able to facilitate this project. Any questions?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, item D, adoption of Resolution 20-10.
All right, Nubia, this is your item, are you still with us?
I'm here.
Great, thank you, I will turn item D over to you.
Hey, Melissa, so, good evening again, council, mayor and council. So this item before you tonight is really a follow-up item to a couple of things. As the council knows, there was a ballot measure from last year's election to convert the elected position of the city clerk slash treasurer into an appointed one, to give the city a little bit more flexibility in situations where you have no one running for the position, it's usually a function of staff, and so the idea behind, that was the idea behind putting it on the ballot for the voters to make that decision as required under the government code. And voters responded and voted to turn this position into an appointed one. So following that, the, as the council knows, the city clerk, technically the city clerk that was the city clerk at the time, Mary Tully, who's been with the city for a number of years, was appointed for that position basically for the same reasons, where there wasn't anyone who was running for the office, and she was kind enough to really fill that role, but we're now in a different scheme. And we're working with staff to memorialize and codify the framework for what this new position is going to look like. But in the meantime, and in the interim, there needs to be some way to account for city clerk functions. Under California law, the city clerk wears many hats, the city clerk acts as an elections official, the city clerk is the individual who has to respond to subpoenas and be served with legal documents. So it is an important position that needs to be filled, at least for now. at least for now in the short term, while we get the frameworks going and have the council make a more permanent appointment. Under California law, there is a provision, it's very unique actually. If there isn't a designated city clerk in place, then there's no official deputy city clerk as well. The law does provide that a sitting council member can serve in that role. And it's important because this person, the city clerk, signs off on resolutions. And again, as I mentioned, is the person that has to be served with official documents. So based off of this, we've worked with staff. And what we have before you tonight is a resolution to fill that position temporarily with what has been designated under state law as city clerk pro temp. And it can be filled by a city council member until such time that we make a permanent appointment. So that is more up for discussion amongst the council members, to see who'd be willing to take on that role. Again, the day-to-day function under the resolution is something that staff will be handling. So the city administrator will make sure that the agenda is posted properly, that the day-to-day business of the city is handled in house. This is more of the justice title and someone to fill that role officially as required by law. So I can answer, that's the general synopsis, but I can answer any questions the council may have.
Nothing here?
So Nubia, we did discuss, you and I, that there is, we do have a deputy city clerk, Jennifer Preston, who was the deputy clerk in the Community Development Department. And Susan, who was the deputy city clerk and really had the overall responsibilities, served that function kind of in a different division of the overall city clerk functions. So just so we could clarify, that won't be an issue. She can still remain the deputy city clerk in the Community Development Department, is that correct?
Yes, because it's a different department and it's a different role. We're looking more at the deputy city clerk for purposes of more administrative services and a general city clerk position. And currently, because of staffing levels and availability of actual staff members, Melissa, you can correct me if I'm wrong, there really isn't anyone else.
No.
To serve.
No. And we would be taxing Jennifer greatly if she were attending city council meetings, planning commission meetings, and doing all the functions of her current position in the Community Development Department.
What would need to be done, like between the hours of eight and five? Because I'm not readily available, per se.
So I would have everything available for your signature and review. I would try to do it at council meetings, so before you leave, everything's signed. So there wouldn't be any expectation that you had added work responsibilities.
Any restrictions on which council member it can be on?
Nubia, did you hear the question about, are there any restrictions on which council member it could be? Could it be a mayor or a vice mayor? Does it have to be a council member without a position on the council?
There is no restriction under state law. It's who members the council collectively determines is best suited for that. There, I know that the question, that one of the questions we talked about internally as well, you know, what if a council member is around now but may not be around later? Well, this, the idea behind this is to make this a very temporary position. Meanwhile, we get the ordinance in place and staff works to square away a few things related to the administrative services position and how to best allocate for another, an official city clerk from an appointed position. So this is very temporary and it can be any council member. It's just someone who's willing to serve. And again, with the idea that staff will handle the day-to-day and this person would be signing off on resolutions and more of those, that type of role.
What about checks signing? Because usually it's a clerk and a council member.
Because I don't believe that the city clerk.
No. So, no, the city clerk did not sign checks.
Okay, so we don't have a way to that? Okay.
Okay. What do we need?
Yeah. A recommendation for appointment to the clerk pro temp to form those duties. So if you have a recommendation on which council member or nomination, would be great.
Do you guys have time?
Well, I'm over there a lot for signing checks, but I don't know if that would make a difference. If that would be helpful, if you're going to have them come here, I don't know if it makes a difference.
And I'll take it on if nobody else, if nobody else wants to do it. I'll, on a permanent or a temporary basis.
So I think, do we have a motion? There's two that have made a recommendation that they would be willing to serve in the function. Nubia, one of the council members is an authorized signer, though, on the checks. Should there be a distinction of those responsibilities?
I don't believe that there's any prohibition against that under the code. However, I think maybe for purposes of just, you know, the appearance, that maybe it'd be the council member who is not authorized to sign checks. So what should happen is if there's some idea of who the nominee would be essentially, it would be to adopt the Resolution Number 20-10 with council member, you know, the specific council member to serve as a city clerk pro temp.
Okay. So we're looking for total nomination.
Yes, please. And then approval of Resolution 20-10, appointing that nominee.
So we will nominate Alvin.
I can nominate myself, so.
As temporary city clerk pro temp to perform the duties and responsibilities.
I'll second it.
Hold favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Four oh, and graduates?
Give both these opinions.
Never been served papers before, here we go.
All right, Nubia, thank you for your help on that item. I appreciate it.
No problem.
You have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
See you later.
Okay. So, Item D is complete. We move on to correspondence.
Just an update on PSPS, that we didn't receive the Cal OES grant. So disappointing. But we've identified those expenses. We will have some potential additional PSPS expenses in preparation for next year. But we are looking for grant and funding alternatives. And we will continue to keep you updated on that effort. Unless there's any questions that you have on that item?
No. Okay, council reports. Linda?
Oh, let's see. At the museum, you know, the digital docent is coming along really well. And they're working on a butterfly garden, I think. You know, we make plants and it's in an area that's kind of enclosed. And the butterflies are around and people can come and see the various butterflies with the plants that are in this container. I can't quite visualize it yet, but anyway, so it sounds like a really good idea. They want to do a percolan. This is the foundation, is going to add that. So that's, it's new. And they've been having good, a lot of attendance. So they've had, at least last month was very good, with an increase.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Not a whole lot. We had the UWPA City of Angels, Murphy's, CCWD meeting that was kind of eye-opening. And I think there's a lot of work to be done financially to, and to look at different things on the FERC relicensing and different things. So it was a good, it was a good meeting. There'll need to be lots more, I think. And then tomorrow is COG and CTA. And it's all we got for now.
Okay. Amanda? Okay. The only thing I'd add to UWPA is that we are actively pursuing a replacement general manager. So I think the flyer went out for that last Friday. So we're hoping to get some of that going. I attended the Solid Waste Task Force meeting on the 20th, where it was announced, well, actually it was announced previously, but Brian Moss, the guy that heads that up, along with a number of other things for the county, has announced his retirement. I think today was his last day, I'm not sure. Maybe yesterday. We got some Brown Act training and we elected officers. Ben Popper's the chair, Sherry Louche, am I pronouncing that right? Is the vice chair. And then we've got some action to work on kind of evaluating the Gambi disposal contract that gets the material from the satellite locations down to Rock Hill. So, and then the management of Rock Hill. That group meets again next month. And then I did attend Central Sierra Economic Development on the 20th of February. Key points there were the Mohawk and Drive presentation was embellished a little bit and it was pointed out. This is a developer that makes an effort to partner with private enterprise with a focus on affordable housing. So apparently, there's some interest been expressed by the hospital in Sonora to kind of stick their toe in the water on this and see how it works. And it's my understanding that the developer that represented this touched base with a number of people in Calvers County. So we may be hearing more about that. There was a broadband conference held just prior to the 20th. I can't remember the exact date. But it was a lot of good information exchanged about bringing broadband to the more rural areas and a lot of discussion around that. We've got some advice that we should include broadband elements in our general plan. And Melissa's already researched that and Amy's come up with some language in there that, while it doesn't specifically use the word broadband, it seems like it makes it clear that we've got policy developed along those lines. And then there was a little bit of discussion around Zoom Prospector, which is a developer's tool to help identify commercial properties within your sphere of influence. And there's some work going on with that to get all of us access to that. So that may be something you might be interested in, Debbie. And I think that was it. So we're looking for a motion to, or any calendar?
Calendar. So we have Calvers Council of Departments meeting tomorrow at 5:30 at the Board of Supervisors chambers. We have the Local Agency Formation Commission, MAFCO, on Monday, March 16th at 6:00 at the Board of Supervisors chambers. And we are back for city council on the 17th.
Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Well, we're adjourned.
All right, Amanda.
Thanks, everybody.
Yes. See what you can do on the show.
Thank you, dear. After. It's a very good share from my back.
Is that right?
Yes. I'll be leaving about you.
You won't be here next time, now that you're like.